Here, Langness?
Here.
Grady?
Here.
Benny?
Here.
Gaedel?
Here.
Singer?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
All right, so if everyone could rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move forward with the swearing-in of our newly-elected council members, some familiar faces and one new member. Michelle, go ahead.
Carol, we'll do you first. If you would please stand and raise your right hand. Do you, Carol McCormick, having been elected to the position of City of Whitewater Council Member for Aldermanic District 1, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, the ordinances of the City of Whitewater, and fairly and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome. Chris?
Sure.
Do you, Chris Grady, having been elected to the position of City of Whitewater Council Member, Aldermanic District 3, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, the ordinances of the City of Whitewater, and fairly and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations, Chris.
I have.
Do you, Stephanie Gaedel, having been elected to the position of City of Whitewater Council Member, Aldermanic District 5, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, the ordinances of the City of Whitewater, and fairly and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of your ability?
I do.
And Patrick?
Do you, Patrick Singer, having been elected to the position of City of Whitewater Council Member at Large, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, the ordinances of the City of Whitewater, and fairly and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of your ability?
I do.
And Patrick?
Do you, Patrick Singer, having been elected to the position of City of Whitewater Council Member at Large, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, the ordinances of the City of Whitewater, and fairly and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of your ability?
I do.
Thanks, Patrick.
Congratulations to our newly-elected council members. We're glad to have -- those of you that are returning, we're glad to have you back. So we'll go ahead and move on to the election of a council president.
I move Patrick Singer as council president?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to have council member-at-large Patrick Singer serve as council president. Do we have any other nominations?
Move the nominations be closed?
Second.
All right, we'll call the vote first and then move on to the next one. Michelle?
Okay, for a nomination for Patrick Singer as president, McCormick?
Aye.
Langness?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Benny?
Aye.
Gaedel?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
All right, thank you. So I'll give you this and you can take on the next election, sir.
All right, well, thank you again, everybody. Next, we'll move on to election of council president, pro tem, also known as vice president. Are there any nominations for council president pro tem? I nominate Lynn Benny.
Second.
All right, it's moved in second to nominate Lynn Benny. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? I move the nominations be closed? All right, Michelle, roll call.
McCormick?
Aye.
Langness?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Benny?
Epstein.
Gaedel?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye. All right, thank you, Lynn, for serving again. All right, next up, we'll move to appointment of council representatives to board and commission. So in years past, we've passed it out early and had a ranking system to help us guide us through this process, which has worked out well, I think. So Michelle has pulled all those together. There are two copies on your desk. One is red and white highlighted and the other one is green highlighted. The green highlighted is the one council member Grady had changed because there were some -- he had changed one of his preferences on it. But I believe all the other numbers are the same as the other ones. So if we just want to work off the green one, since that has Chris's last preferences on it, that might make it easier. So usually what we do is just go down the list and if there's really no competition, then we just vote as a slate to appoint the members. So the first board and commission is the Alcohol Licensing Committee. That has three council members on that body. So the ones with the highest amount of interest were McCormick, Langness, and Gaedel. Myself and Lynn Benny had ranked it the same as Ms. Gaedel, but I would defer out of that. It's fine.
It's fine. I've chaired the committee for like five years, so.
Yeah. All right, so the appointments for alcohol licensing would be McCormick, Langness, and Gaedel. Next up is Burge Fountain. Jim Allen had it ranked as his highest preference. Nobody else was in the ballpark. Next is Board of Review. So this is our Board of Review year where we have to appoint an extra member because there's only three council members up for election next year, so there needs to be a fourth appointed. I was the only one that ranked it. I've been on Board of Review before unless anybody really wants it that isn't -- that just got sworn in. I'd be fine with taking that again. All right. CDA, I had it ranked as my second. Jim had it ranked as his first. Nobody else had it ranked anywhere close. Landmarks Commission, Chris Grady had it marked as his first. Nobody else was close. Library Board, Chris Grady had his marked as first. Nobody else was near that. Park and Rec Board, Councilmember McCormick had it ranked as her first and nobody else was in range. Plan Commission, we have Lynn, you had it marked as your first. And then, Chris, does that say alternate? Is that you as the alternate?
Yes, that's probably what I am.
Okay. All right. Police Commissions, Ms. Gaedel had it marked as her first. Tech Park Board, I had it marked as my first. Nobody else was in the area. Fire Department Board was Mr. Langness had it marked as his first and Ms. Gaedel, you had it marked as your second.
It's fine.
Okay. So Councilmember Langness. And then the new boards that we have, well, Community Involvement Commission, we had Mr. Benny had it marked as his third. Nobody else was close, which is also the Cable TV Commission. And then our new Public Works Commission or Committee would have Councilmember McCormick, Gaedel, and Allen were the three that had it ranked as their highest priority. And then the Finance Committee would have Councilmembers Langness, Benny, and myself. All right. Any changes at this point or is there a motion to approve?
Approval, and that was the fastest this ever went, I believe.
Second. All right.
With thanks to Michelle and Chris for their assistance in compiling it.
All right. So motion is to approve the slate of appointments for the next council year. It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All right, roll call, Michelle.
Langness?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Benny?
Aye.
Gaedel?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
McCormick?
Aye.
Langness?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Move on to staff reports and citizen comments. Even though Cameron's city manager report was not on the agenda per se, he was going to still provide that under those two.
Right. I am a citizen, so I was going to make a comment. So, but it will be brief. It will be brief. For those of you that want to follow along on the screen, you may. I would point out that that is a larger projection of a slide than we've had in the past. At the last meeting, I didn't point this out. We had our projector die and so took opportunity to acquire a new projector along with a larger screen. So the screen is much larger. Hopefully then, you know, if I for some reason forget my glasses one day, we'll still be able to carry on with the presentation. So just an update on human resources, our recruitment efforts. Parks and Recreation Director candidates will be meeting here in person on Monday, April 24th. The delay getting to that point really was trying to coordinate schedules to ensure that Park and Rec Board members as well as Urban Forestry Commission members were able to participate if they so chose. But that will have three candidates here and following that day-long event, we anticipate having an offer extended to the final candidate for selection by the end of the week, next week, if not before. CDA Executive Director, currently we're negotiating a final offer with a candidate for the CDA position. The Finance and Administrative Services Director position has been filled. Steve Hatton, who was our finalist candidate, has formally accepted an offer of employment. So he will begin with the city on also Monday, April 24th. That will be a busy day here at City Hall, but he's on board. I'll provide a broader introduction at our next meeting. We'll have Steve join us at the next meeting. But I can tell you, he comes from private sector experience and but has a wealth of knowledge and skills that will be a huge advantage, I think.
Very highly recommended by his coworkers also.
Yes. Yes, indeed. We had nothing but stellar reports from others and references. So, and so, officer, we conclude our interviews on November, excuse me, April, not November, April 19th. Parks and Recreation, just wanted to show this, you know, big fish stories are appropriate. So we have a program at Parks and Recreation now that is fishing. It's a fishing clinic out down at the lake. This young man started fishing at 6:15 PM with the rest of the group and at 6:20 PM caught a catfish that looks like it could possibly weigh as much as he does. So just wanted to show that. I think that's fun when we can do that. That was right down here at the park.
Oh, no.
So, yep. Five minutes. So right now, if you like catfish, maybe you should take a trip down to the.
Swimming there.
Lake. But that's just one. Well, I thought this was a cute picture, but just one example of why we do a lot of the programs we do. And by we, I mean mostly in this case, our current and park and recreation director, Michelle Dujardin, and her staff that supports her providing good programs to the community. So it's fantastic when you see smiles on people's faces and you know they're doing what they should in terms of benefiting the community. So Seniors in the Park, I won't go through this bulleted list of programs, but there are a variety of programs up and coming over the next several weeks and months. If you have any questions about any of these programs, please contact Deb Weber-Paul, who is our Seniors in the Park Coordinator for all activities and events, or simply contact our Parks and Recreation Department and we can connect you with the right person to answer your questions. But just be aware that programs are constantly being released and new programs designed for seniors in the park. And so if you are looking for something to do and you are 55 or better, please take advantage. I don't think you have to be actually 55 or better, but that'll be my tagline for the day. Whitewater Aquatic Center, we are in process, actually completed, printing of new brochures. They have been provided at the Aquatic Center. That's just been a long process to make sure we got the right information, updated information over the last few weeks. And congratulations to those employees. Take a moment to check them out next time you're in the Aquatic Center. Just by way of things going on with Public Works Department, I just wanted to try to include this and hopefully we will include more in the future of what things are happening. Last week was a busy week for wastewater crews as they checked our lift stations. We have eight lift stations total in the city. And these lift stations, the sewer system is run by gravity, so everything's at a slope and eventually it gets so deep that you need to pump material up again to go down by gravity again. So these lift stations are throughout the collection system and it's important to check those every year to make sure they're functioning properly. That was last week for our wastewater crews. For our water crew, some of you may have noticed a break on Anne Street and Fremont Street. This is, it's dark because it's early in the morning and late at night when breaks happen. They don't ever happen during the day when people are working. So they, our crews came in swiftly and took care of the, repairing the line and filling it in. But that's just one example of the many things they're involved with. Also, if you've driven down Fremont Street, North Fremont Street, you'll notice that 330 North Fremont, which was acquired by the city now over a year ago, has been razed and the spaces, seed will be planted shortly in that space and it will be a vacant space until we have need to expand our water facility there on Fremont. I didn't have any pictures for brush pickup, but just wanted to put a plug out. That brush pickup is underway this week. So have your bagged yard waste on the curb. You're actually supposed to have it by yesterday. But if you have any questions regarding that or regarding the compost site, which will soon be open as of April 22nd, please give us a call at the City Hall and we can connect you with the right folks to give you the answers you need. Also, just a reminder that this is tornado and severe weather week, so be aware of that. And for our residents, taking opportunity to come up with a plan, what would you do in a severe weather situation in your home or as you're out and about in the community? Something we don't often think about, but it's, everyone should have a plan for their safety and the safety well-being of those that they're, of their family that they're living with. Also, April 29th, a Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 will be a shred event. These are mostly exciting, two accountants, I think, and some others that keep a lot of paper. But if you have a lot of paper, please feel free to bring it down for this event. A variety of records will be taken for those that have need of shredding. Other community events, there's a list here. This slide along with the others will be posted on our website for your view. If you want more details on any of these items, please feel free to contact us. And as always, our PR and Communications Manager, Kristin Mickelson, is happy to take a call and question. So with that, that's the end of my public comments.
All right. All right, next up, we have hearing of Citizen Comments. No formal council action will be taken during this meeting, although issues raised may become part of a future agenda. Participants are allowed a three-minute speaking period. And although specific items listed on the agenda may not be discussed at this time, we definitely allow for public input when those items come up for debate. So if there's anything not on the agenda, come up to the podium and just state your name and address for the record.
I'm Cory Oberle and I reside here in Whitewater in District 1 at 688 Waters Edge Drive. And in a couple of weeks, it will be May and May is also National Historic Preservation Month. Whitewater currently has 21 local landmark properties. All 21 landmarks were researched and nominated by the Landmarks Commission and officially designated by vote by Whitewater's Common Council, your predecessors, according to Title 17 of the city's municipal code. These local landmarks are also listed on the city's website. Whitewater also has a historic district listed on the National Register of Historic Places, a national honorary program coordinated by the National Park Service. Our historic district stretches along Main Street from Prairie Street East to Fremont Street and then south on Church Street from Main to Center Street. One pivotal structure within this national historic district is the building owned currently and occupied by Mercy Healthcare at 507 West Main on the southwest corner of West Main and Franklin Streets, the intersection of US Highways 12 and 89 and also known locally as the Green Shutters. This building may ring a bell as it is being talked about locally lately more than usual. Its photo was posted recently on the Whitewater banner. Those of you who have arrived in Whitewater since 1990, let me introduce you to the structure at 507 West Main. It hasn't always been a health clinic. The building is 157 years old, built during the early years of the Civil War. It's in excellent condition and contributes to the tax rolls. It's not decrepit. It's not empty, lighted, abandoned, or in need of revitalization. It has been nationally recognized. It has stood the test of time better than any of us ever will. It's been Mercy Healthcare for the past 25 years. Before that, for 65 years, from the 1920s until the mid-'80s, it was the Green Shutters Tea Room and Restaurant, written up in national magazines, Duncan Hines Adventures in Good Eating, Gourmet, et cetera. It was long a regional destination for people. Before that, for another 65 years, it was home to three generations of the Sterren family and you may recognize that family name. It's been a local landmark for 32 years since 1985 because of its architectural and cultural significance. It's protected by Whitewater's Landmarks Ordinance, which requires a 12-month period in which to save it before demolition can occur. Because of its age, its size, and its brick construction, it is not a candidate for moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody else wishing to speak at this time? All right, seeing no one, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is Ordnance is First Reading. The only item we have is O2, which is amending Chapter 11 to correct winter parking hour regulations in the city. This, you want me to take it or you want?
Yeah, you can.
Well, you want to take it or would Jim take it?
I think Jim asked that it be introduced in order to make sure there wasn't a conflict and confusion regarding winter parking hours and this is simply an amendment to the ordinance. I tweaked it a few times since the one that's in here, but you'll see the final one and the next one. But it simply lines up the winter parking with some of the other parking district regulations and so it's a very simple change.
All right. So any action on this or any other questions? I move O2.
Second.
It's moved in second to approve O2. Mr. Benny?
I would comment, not that it's being considered in this current revision. Quite some time ago, I did question Chuck Nuss regarding the length of this ban. It seemed to me that November tended to not be a month that was very snowy. Actually, this year, maybe it was more than most months and even at that, very little. And I actually went back and looked at Weather Bureau records and indeed, November has almost never had a very significant snow, so I suggested to him the possibility of moving to December 1st. He was not enthusiastic about that suggestion, feeling that primarily November's a good month to give people notice about the ban. I don't know, if the winters continue like this last one, I almost think we could move towards an emergency ban like Fort Atkinson does rather than a complete ban on wintertime parking. But I just submit that for future thoughtfulness.
Thank you, Lynn. We can, I can have a conversation with Chuck and provide more details.
To further explain, at our city's entrances, there are signs that say the winter ban is, goes until 6:00 AM or 6:30. I don't remember.
Six, I think.
Six. Okay, but our street signs, which are, there are hundreds in the city, say five. Okay? So a constituent wrote to me and said that he got pinched. He parked right in front of the sign, took a picture of it. It said five. At 5:20, he was cited. So we need to just, you know, one or the other. Spoke to Chuck. It's easier to change the entrance signs to the city than it is to change hundreds of street signs, so that's it. All right, is there any further discussion?
Good call.
All right, anybody in the public? All right, motion is to approve. Roll call, Michelle.
Benny?
Aye.
Gaedel?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
McCormick?
Aye.
Langness?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Move on to considerations. First up is C2, update on capital improvement projects. Mr. McDonald?
All right, for this presentation, I'll be touching on the 2017 CIP projects and then also the larger road reconstruction projects. We consider the project an XIP program and the cost has to be $5,000 or more and have a useful life of five years or more. So if you look at the screen, you will see all of the 2017 CIP projects planned for 2017 by the department. So what you're looking at, the light green are ones that we consider to be on schedule or we expect them to be completed by the end of the year. The ones in the darker green, which the color must not be right in the projector, they should be a bright yellow. But those are ones that I primarily want to talk about. And then the red ones are ones that have major change, although you can't really read it up there. But I'll start with the administration. We have $30,000 budgeted for the purchase of election tabulation equipment. This is three machines that we need for election tabulation for Walworth County votes. Based on feedback from Walworth County, it looks like they may be delaying their decision on what machines they want to use until 2018. So subsequently, we'd be pushing, possibly pushing this project in 2018 as well. The police department's CIP projects, the red one, which you can't read, is there was $60,000 for the purchase of an evidence garage, construction of an evidence garage. Currently, they keep evidence. They have evidence room in their basement. They keep some in their garage at City Hall and the police garage. They also have a small, I think it's a one or two-stall garage out at the streets garage where they keep some bulkier, larger items. That one out at the streets garage is overflowing with evidence. There's, they've had water damage on their evidence. They get rodents in there. Now, this has been put on hold. The police department has, they've received a lot of feedback from their staff, their officers, about safety issues with having their vehicles out. And a lot of their staff was requesting that management look into the possibility of expanding a police garage in the back of the building. We worked with Strand, the city engineers, to kind of get a price estimate for, you know, in the perfect world, money was no issue, you know, what the police would like to see. That price came in pretty high, so I think there's going to be some future discussions on if there's any other alternatives or less costly options. So at the moment, this project most likely will not happen this year. Please correct me if I'm wrong on any of that. I'll move over to facilities and recreation. One thing I wanted to touch base with tonight is we have about $60,000 budgeted for on-street bike lanes. And I just remember from the last CIP discussion, there seemed to be some hesitation from council on those. So I just wanted to just give feedback if there's any hesitation in council that would not want us to pursue that. But currently, I did pass around a map showing our current on-street bike and our current multi-use trails. And essentially, in this year's budget, we have budgeted the installation of permanent bike lanes on Walworth, on Indian Mound, and on Elizabeth in the CIP in 2018. Then we have bike lanes here in Wisconsin and on East Bluff. In 2019, as part of the DOT project, they'll be adding bike lanes on Milwaukee Street between the Roundabout and Newcomb. And so if there was any hesitation from council, now would be a good time to get some feedback for that. Moving on to stormwater, we have three detention basins that were planned for this year. We have been doing detention basins in the recent years. The purpose of the basins is to clean water before they enter the local waterways. We've received approximately $100,000 grants for each of the ponds through DNR grant programs. We are recommending that, well, we talked to the Janesville Street and Business Park. We're still working with private property owners and trying to find a location for those
Mr. McDonald.
All right, for this presentation, I'll be touching on the 2017 CIP projects, and then also the larger road reconstruction projects. We consider the project an XIP program, and the cost has to be $5,000 or more, and have a useful life of five years or more. So if you look at the screen, you will see all of the 2017 CIP projects planned for 2017 by the department. So what we're looking at, the light green are ones that we consider to be on schedule, or we expect them to be completed by the end of the year. The ones in the darker green, which the color must not be right in the projector, they should be a bright yellow. But those are ones that I primarily want to talk about, and then the red ones are ones that have major change. You can't really read it up there. But I'll start with the administration. We have $30,000 budgeted for the purchase of election tabulation equipment. This is three machines that we need for election tabulation for Walworth County votes. Based on feedback from Walworth County, it looks like they may be delaying their decision on what machines they want to use until 2018. So subsequently, we'd be pushing, possibly pushing this project into 2018 as well. The police department's CIP projects, the red one, which you can't read, is there was $60,000 for the purchase of an evidence garage, construction of an evidence garage. Currently, they keep evidence, they have evidence room in their basement, they keep some in their garage, a city hall and police garage. They also have a small, I think it's a one or two-stall garage out at the streets garage, where they keep some bulkier, larger items. That one out at the streets garage is overflowing with evidence. There's, they've had water damage on their evidence, they get rodents in there. Now, this has been put on hold. The police department has, they've received a lot of feedback from their staff, their officers, about safety issues with having their vehicles out, and a lot of their staff was requesting that management look into the possibility of expanding a police garage in the back of the building. We worked with Strand, the city engineers, to kind of get a price estimate for, you know, in the perfect world, money was no issue, you know, what the police would like to see. That price came in pretty high, so I think there's going to be some future discussions on if there's any other alternatives or less costly options. So at the moment, this project most likely will not happen this year. Please correct me if I'm wrong on any of that. I'll move over to facilities and recreation. One thing I wanted to touch base with tonight is we have about $60,000 budgeted for on-street bike lanes. And I just remember from the last CIP discussion, there seemed to be some hesitation from council on those. So I just wanted to just give feedback, if there's any hesitation from council that would not want us to pursue that. But currently, I did pass around a map showing our current on-street bike and our current multi-use trails. And essentially, in this year's budget, we have budgeted the installation of permanent bike lanes on Walworth, on Indian Mound, and on Elizabeth in the CIP in 2018. Then we have bike lanes here in Wisconsin and on East Bluff. In 2019, as part of the DOT project, they'll be adding bike lanes on Milwaukee Street between the Roundabout and Newcomb. And so if there was any hesitation from council, now would be a good time to get some feedback for that. Moving on to stormwater, we have three detention basins that were planned for this year. We have been doing detention basins in the recent years. The purpose of the basins is to clean water before they enter the local waterways. We've received approximately $100,000 grants for each of the ponds through DNR grant programs. We are recommending that, well, we talked to the Janesville Street and Business Park, we're still working with private property owners to try to find a location for those ponds. It's unlikely that they could get done this year anyways. The Ann Street Detention Basin, we're planning to reconstruct Franklin and Ann Street, which is just adjacent to that location where we have purchased property for that basin. So we think it would be in the best interest of the city to bid those, all three together, all at the same time with the Franklin and Ann Street project. We bid, as you may remember, we bid the Ann Street Basin in summer of 2016, and the bids were much higher than anticipated. So we think we bid the three ponds together, we can go more aggressive price. Now I'm going to move on to the larger road reconstruction projects. Okay, so I'll start with the Franklin and Ann Street project, which is in the upper right corner. So this is a full road reconstruct from Whitewater Street, the intersection of Church down Franklin, and then over to Ann. Originally, we had the project limits ending just east. There's a little creek or stream here that makes its way to the creek. But based on feedback from our water and sewer superintendent, the utilities in this location are very bad, and it also kind of makes sense to end the project edit intersection a little bit cleaner. So originally, this was planned for this year in the CIP, but right now, we are working on completing a community development block grant application. Right now, the budget costs, which is about $2 million, and we're hoping to get about $500,000 in grant funds, which we're pretty confident that we'll be able to get, and those, that grant applications due at the end of May. So we're currently working on that and recommending that be bid in 2018. And then also, then I guess I will talk about the Clay Street project. So this, also in the CIP, is a full reconstruct, so we're talking storm sewer, water, sanitary and street curb, sidewalk, all that. So from the Roundabout to Dan Street, Esterly Street. Last time I was at council, we talked about the possibility of potentially doing the utilities, water and sanitary in Clay Street in 2018, and then the street and storm water in 2020. But now we think it just makes sense to do them all in one year. This project, the Clay Street portion, we have received a grant through the state for 1.35 million, to help reduce the cost of that project. Now, when our engineers were taking a look at all the record drawings and all the utilities in the area, we noticed an area on Dan Street, there's a large storm sewer that runs down Dan and goes down to the lake. And there's a sanitary sewer right around in this area that in order to go under that storm sewer, it has a big dip in it, and it serves about 10 homes on Clay Street. That sanitary sewer pipe is currently just full of water, and so there's a dip, and salads will settle in there, and this is just not ideal. And Dan Street also, like, the water main there is old, it's only four-inch. And so if we're, at this point, we're, Steph is considering recommending also doing Dan Street in conjunction with this plan for this project, because if we don't touch Dan Street, then this dip issue will always be there, it won't be able to be addressed. Cameron, if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, just a couple things, thank you. So with that, as Chris is mentioning, the circumstance on Dan Street with the sewer line, the sewer main, would not be repairable should we wait until other infrastructure on Dan is in worse shape. Dan is, I don't recall right now where it is on the schedule, but it's a street where, if we were to wait on this project until it was, whether it be two, three years, or 20 years down the road, we would not be able to repair the problem. And what we've got, as Chris mentioned, is a dip in the pipe. And as I mentioned before in my other presentation, since sewer laterals and sewer mains work on a gravity, the principle of gravity, when you have a pipe that flows lower than another pipe that it's supposed to go into, and then has this little dip, you can end up with some big problems in the future and stuff none of us want to deal with. So what we're, that's the reason for this change right now. We know that, as a result, in order to repair that main and bring all the sewer collector lines to the proper height to keep everything going efficiently, we'll need to replace the sewer main all the way down Dan Street. So it's, while some could debate whether or not it should be included based on its overall condition and appearance, if we don't do it now, we'll, when it's time to reconstruct the full street, we'll be putting in brand-new equipment that has the same problem, because Clay Street will already be done, and there's no way to adjust the height or the depth of the Clay Street lateral, or the, or main, excuse me. So that's the reason for it. Before we move forward with the most significant costs associated with this project, we'll evaluate our debt service limits and where we are financially, and provide that information to the council. I'm thrilled to have someone to help us do that starting next week. So you'll have, you'll have more information before a final decision is requested of you all. But just so that you're aware, we're strongly considering that just as a way to resolve this problem now, rather than wait 50, 80, 100 years with a high risk for sewer backups in that area.
Is there any plan as to what we're going to do when Milwaukee Street closes as a detour?
Yes. And that's, Chris might be able to speak to it a little more detail, but we can bring that back.
Right now, on staging, right now, it looks like, so they will be doing the intersection and then Milwaukee Street. I don't have it shown here, but basically all the way to the bypass. It looks like, at this point, we're still having an early discussion, so probably do it in three phases. So probably do the intersection, just, just to the west of the Tratt Street, is that where Subway?
There, oh, there. This is, we've got Estherly, and then, yeah. Right at Newcomb, you're talking, just beyond Newcomb?
The Tratt Street. So this would probably be phase one. So they would, this portion, and the second phase would be from above this point to the Roundabout, and the third phase would be from the Roundabout out. And then, once this is closed, you know, commercial traffic, semis and that thing, they'll probably be routed on Howard Road and out around to maintain the integrity of the local roads. But local access, local access routes on Clay Street. And because the Clay Street road has not been done until 2020, it's in very bad condition now, we may be looking at reinforcing the road in some areas, just so it can hold up when it acts as a detour, the Milwaukee Street detour. We think we'll probably have a public information meeting on this project, probably end of May, early June. And then we come back to council and kind of give an update on it. And we'll probably hopefully have more information on staging at that point. So right now, we're kind of working with the property and business owners in that area, and we're talking to them on different station options and giving their feedback. So we'll probably have more information in June.
Chris, in future, previous discussions concerning the businesses along that Milwaukee Street, we had talked about how in other communities, they do one side of the highway at a time, and we wanted to look into that with construction.
Yeah, we brought that up with the DOT the last time. It was probably six weeks ago, we had a meeting in Waukesha, and they said it was just too early in their planning process to see if that would even be feasible with their staging and the utility work that's going to be going in. And they didn't think it'd be feasible. I mean, we, Steph can keep trying to push them at, you know, every step to see if it is possible. If it is possible, I'm sure we can make it work. But if it's not possible, then they'll have to have a good explanation on why.
Well, they'll need to be pushed. It happens in other communities. We just need to hold fast and stick to our guns.
Steph can do it.
We continue to share that message. So upcoming meetings, before the information meeting with Strand Engineering, and then Strand, and existing, our city staff will be going to Waukesha again regularly for the next little while, and this will continue to come up as an issue.
But I think we need to maintain that message. Like, whoever the person is who's meeting with them, I mean, we've announced that Chris is leaving, so whoever the person is who's going to meeting, we don't have a public works director. So if we don't, you know, obviously, they don't want to do it that makes the project harder. I wouldn't want to do it either. I don't want to do anything that makes my job more difficult. But unfortunately, that's the reality here. So staff needs to stick to their guns here and say, these are businesses. It's going to negatively impact them even having one lane instead of two. So we need to stick to this, and whoever is going needs to be consistent on their messaging, because it's not going to consistently be one person.
There was a major business on that route that almost went under in 1979, when we did a major reconstruction there. And Frosty's contributes, thinks that road construction there contributed to their final failure as well. So we do, we need to take care of our businesses, and if it can happen in other communities, we just have to make it happen here, too.
I do not remember that, but I'm sure you're right.
Mr. Langness and Ms. McCormick?
That's a good memory, Jim. I don't remember it.
Not bad for 39, huh?
But, yeah, I just want to comment, I do have hesitations on the bike pass, so we should set up a future meeting sometime.
Yeah, and with the bike pass, there'll be a lot of, have to be outreach to those, there may have to be parking changes. You know, there may be, you know, some permanent lanes on one half, and Sherwood's on the other half. On Indian Mound, there may be areas where it's wide enough where we can have a parking lane with designated bike lane in conjunction. So there'll be a lot, lot more meetings.
Because I think that's an issue we've run into with these before, is I think, you know, there are areas of this community where we've sacrificed parking, and people continue not to ride their bikes there. And it's sort of ridiculous. I mean, if it's an area, I think we put them there with the intention that people will ride their bikes there if we put the bike lanes there. But I have yet to see that idea come to fruition, and I want to make sure we don't continue with that idea and end up hurting people who live in the area or businesses in the immediate vicinity. I think bike lanes are great. I ride my bike all over the community, but I also can ride my bike on a street that doesn't have a bike lane. It is a possibility, and I think that's something that really needs to seriously be considered, because I ride my bike on Tratt Street, and there are vehicles parked on Tratt Street, and I can still ride my bike there. So Staran Road has bike lanes on both sides, and every single day I drive down Staran Road, and every single day, there are people riding their bikes on the sidewalks.
So I guess that we made.
Hold on, James, Ms. McCormick, head her.
Yeah, I actually did a ride in my car today. I went to all the different streets that were designated for bike lanes. And I went down South Elizabeth first, and I, it's a tight road to begin with. And just out of curiosity, I drove through the middle school bike rack to see how many bikes were actually being used, and there were seven in the bike rack. But of course, you know, it's early spring, too. And I went down Indian Mound, and that's very wide. I don't think you need a bike lane there to begin with, because there's plenty of room for everybody there. And I don't know how many people actually go down there and ride their bike. That's kind of out of the community, so to speak. The other thing, too, I wanted to comment on, I live on Clay Street, and I'm really concerned when that project goes through East Milwaukee, I don't think our street can handle any more traffic than it already has. We really took a beating before when there was construction, and I think that really contributed a lot to what's going on there right now.
In terms of physically being able to?
Hot holes, and, yeah. It's really getting bad.
Yeah, I'm actually concerned as well, so we're going to have to take a good look at trying to reinforce it, so that it holds up as well.
And that's a big concern from the people that have lived on Clay Street. That's, has really been brought up to me quite a bit.
And that'll be a discussion point during the public information meeting.
Ms. McCormick, would you like us to look at alternative routes for the bypass during the time?
Good, good point.
Awesome. Yeah, I just touched back on the bike pass. I think that my three main concerns are cost, utility, and parking, so.
I think probably the next step is staff would have public information meetings and invite the residents that would be affected, and we could provide some different options for parking and biking accommodations, and kind of get their feedback, and do our best to get price estimates. Granted, we don't know prices, so we actually contact to get bids for it, but then we can bring back feedback to council after the public information meeting.
I agree with the council member McCormick that we need to look at an alternative route in Clay Street.
Yeah, Clay Street's bad.
Mr. Benny?
On the bike route subject, Center Street, Highland Street really is, I think, potentially a very effective bike route now. It's very well labeled on the street, however, I don't feel like we've done much of anything to promote the public's knowledge of that being a bike route now. And to me, it's such a nice, flat road compared with trying to go on Main Street through the university area, where you've got a hill that, until you're riding a bike, you don't realize how steep that hill is. I recognize the university still has never helped us by designating any bike routes through their property for us to decide where to try to direct people off of this bike route. But I do think some signage at both ends of that bike route, as well as maybe even some on Main Street itself, helping people to know that that is where they ought to think about going, would be helpful. It's certainly a much safer route than trying to ride a bike on Main Street.
I know the recreation department's taking a look at the Wayfinding Signage Program, and I know that it's not being revamped, so that could be certainly incorporated to that discussion.
Yeah, Center Street is easily the best bike ride in town. I mean, I lost the ability to, like, take walks several years ago, and I've slowly learned how to ride a bike over the last year, and that by far is the best and easiest route in the community, and the safest by far. So, but, I mean, if you weren't someone with an immediate knowledge of where you could ride a bike in Whitewater very safely, I think you would probably not find it. So I think that's a very good point.
However, that's true, but however, there are residents on Center Street that would disagree, because they think it's so wide that...
It is really.
That, you know, they don't think, they don't agree that we should not have parking for cars on either side.
I actually agree. I don't necessarily know that it should be there, but it is there, so we should use it.
Are there any other comments by council? Is anybody in the public wishing to speak on this? Or staff?
Just the issue about the garage and evidence. I wasn't aware that it was being pulled, so just a bit of miscommunication. We are bursting at the seams with evidence. Part of the garage discussion was a public safety issue for the officers, but also part of that design was the existing garage would become more evidence. So if we could just not leave believing that this is off the table, and that we could just keep our open minds and see if we can come up with some justifications and discussion points, because without question, we need, we need the garage, but if we don't do the garage, we can't take the evidence garage off of the table, because we're out of space. So it's kind of a critical issue on both. So I'm just asking is that, you know, you don't leave today thinking it's off the table.
And it won't be.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I mean, it was pulled. I just said it's on hold while we explored other options.
Okay. All right, that's, that's all I wanted, thank you.
All right, any other comments? Any other discussion or questions by council? All right. Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, next up, we have C3, discussion possible direction regarding term limits for board and commission members. Mr. Allen.
Oh, I just wanted us to have a discussion on relaxing term limits on boards and commissions.
Okay, well, that's a broad topic.
Can you give us some background?
Currently, people term out on boards and commissions, and I think as long as they're willing to serve, and it's hard to get people to step up, that we should relax those. Obviously, we can't for council, because that would be set by statute, but boards and commissions are pretty much, most of them, are set by city ordinance.
And I don't know, maybe one of the things we should have had for this meeting, and are bad for not asking, is a list of all the board and commissions, and do, because not all of them, I believe, have a term limit, or they all, some have varying ones, like...
I think you have a, I think you have a policy that provides term limits, or term out.
Most of the ordinance I've looked at around, when we were looking at the board and commissions, it's in the board and commission.
Like the actual, yeah.
Section, like the park and rec board, it's in there. It's not...
I mean, there's also a written policy, I believe, that says that there is a, that there is term limits for, it just generally describes generically for each, I think, Michelle, isn't that correct? For each commission, whether the term limits are three or four, that commissioner or board, your written policy says, whether or not it's in the actual ordinance, you have a written policy that does provide term limits. So I think that the way things are right now, it is, there's term limits on everything based on policy, and then, as Patrick correctly states, some have term limits in the actual ordinance, some don't.
Then I would move that we gather that information and bring it forth in the next meeting.
Is there any objection to that? All right.
No, that's good, we can do that.
Anything else, Mr. Allen?
No, thank you.
All right, next up, we have C5, update on visit to Plattville to view their library slash hotel development.
slash hotel development. That'll be presented by our city manager and potentially our library director will have some comments on that. And then, presentation by library board representatives on the needs for a new library and/or major upgrades. So, Cameron, do you want to lead us off and then we can kind of go from there?
Yep. If you'll permit me, I'm just making, finishing a note from that last item. Okay. Yes, so, last, now it's been a little bit more than that. A couple of weeks ago, we had a visit to Platteville. Let me grab this. I forgot. Forgot I needed it again. All right. We, we had a visit to Platteville and by we, I mean, our neighborhood services director as well as our library director and myself, along with the library board president, attended or visited, there we go, thank you, visited Platteville to meet with their administrator as well, or excuse me, city manager, as well as the library director and get a tour of their current site as well as look through the, the new facility that's under construction. So, what I wanted to do today is really go through with all of you what our experience was there and then talk a little bit about how that relates to us. So, in Whitewater. Also, provide a bit of history regarding the project there and discussions that have happened here. And I put in parentheses there, much ado about nothing. I appreciate very much the concern regarding historic property. That's not what I'm talking about, but it seems sometimes that, that when people hear about something through, which really hasn't materialized yet in, in most ways, it seems as though if someone on this, at this dais sneezes, people claim we have the flu. So, I would just encourage that, that if people have questions, to contact city officials rather than a hairstylist or someone at Walmart and get, get answers. And if you're sensing a bit of sarcasm, it's frustrating for me that we have people that don't contact officials to ask questions. So, I've heard a lot of different things in the community and the majority of which are incorrect. So, we'll go through some of those right now and clarify some things. When we talk about history from the city's perspective, the library board met in February. We had a concerned resident that had a contact with Mr. Troy Hookstra, who is currently in process of building a facility in Platteville as a public-private partnership. And the facility there includes a library and a hotel and they're, they will be utilizing the old library building as a new building for a clinic that's, that was operating previously in a very dilapidated, dilapidated structure. And I'll get into more details in a minute. But, Mr. Hookstra came in February, February, March of last year. Following that meeting, the staff brought to the common council a discussion of the same, the same possibility. And what was phrased was simply, if we had someone come forward, this person being the number one someone we would anticipate coming forward, with a proposal that included redevelopment of our library, but also some other private facilities such as a hotel, would the council be willing to consider that? And at that time, it was very open, very, just very open. No, no specific details as yet. It was not tied to a specific location, though staff were, was aware that Mr. Hookstra, well, actually, in February, March, the staff was not aware that Mr. Hookstra was looking in the area where he has since brought up. Following that, there was a long wait. And in September, we had a, a request from WEDA and from Mr. Hookstra to complete a letter of support about the project, regarding the project. So, the common council, based on common council direction, I wrote that letter.
Was that letter run by the common council before it was sent? Did we vote on that letter?
No.
But we told them in-
But I had, I was running off the same, I was running off the same direction and it was, that I had received in February, March of 2016. It's, it's customary with projects when people are applying for grants. We've, we've had letters like that written before. So, but that letter was written specifically for the idea of a potential project, not for this, this project as it's been brought forward, though at that time, staff was aware that there was the pot, well, that the current location of the emergency clinic was being eyed as a piece of that project. Following that, various conference calls and follow-up emails and meetings. Until that brings us to common council meeting in March, in March 2017 with closed session, where Mr. Hookstra, Jeff Knight, our chair of the CDA, as well as Stacy Lunsford, library director, were in attendance. City attorney and myself were not available that night, so we were not participants in the meeting. But essentially, Mr. Hookstra was able to come and bring his thoughts to the council as really a closed session on him because of the potential for negotiation at some point. But, I believe the council's, the council's message following that closed session in open session was, this is as yet a green banana. There's going to be discussion regarding this, this project in the future. Mr. Hookstra can certainly bring us more information, but I don't think anybody was interested in moving forward right then with, with anything. Is that correct, Patrick?
That was the majority of the council was, yeah.
Thank you. And so, that led us up to the library visit on April 6th, where we attended Platteville. So, you have in, in the council packet and online, I would direct people to the information we received from Platteville as a, as part of the visit there, so that you can review it if you want to follow along. But, I'll just go through some, some initial points that are really all in the Platteville materials. But, as we look, this is, this is just an initial picture of the design for the structure and it's very, I would say, overall true to form. I think there are some architectural changes that have occurred, but the design or layout is the same. So, Platteville's library board began investing, or excuse me, investigating library expansion and new, and/or new construction in 2009. The library director presented a site evaluation and site selection, or selection study to the council in 2010. The council did not accept that study. However, in 2011, downtown, downtown development plan was adopted by the council in Platteville that included the library block as an identified location for future redevelopment. And options did include a new library, underground parking, commercial space, student housing, and office space. In the fall of 2012, the library board at city council decided to hire a grant writer to seek funding to conduct a feasibility study, feasibility study to help support their move or transition should anything move forward in the future. Then, in the WEDC, a planning grant from the WEDC was also awarded to the city of Platteville in January 2013. In June 2013, representatives from the Main Street Program Library Board, the city, WEDC, and other entities began meeting to talk about pursuing redevelopment of the library block. In summer of 2013 and through the fall redevelopment, the redevelopment feasibility study for Platteville library project was conducted. So, that's just some basic, basic history of where, where that project is, or what brought them to 2012 and, and discussion of actual agreements with a potential developer for a project. So, this is an, just a layout drawing of the block where the project is underway. It's, it's right along Main Street and Pine Street. You can see the other streets, Elm and Chestnut there. The library fronts on Main Street. It is a 22,000 square foot facility. And then, the hotel is along the side of Street, Chestnut. And that is a, what would be, I'm sorry, maybe I read that wrong. 22,000 square foot commercial space and 40, 40, no, I was right. 22,000 square foot library space and then a 43,000 square foot hotel, Holiday Inn Express. The library and hotel buildings are on the site of the old clinic, which was, it's currently in a portion of their city hall. While they do all the transition, complete construction and transition to the library, to the new facility, following that transition, the clinic will move to the old library building. So, it was indeed a public-private partnership to redevelop that block. They've demolished six existing buildings. The renovation of the current public library space into the health clinic is, is pending. And this project has in addition 55 underground and 42 surface parking lot spaces. Underground parking is something that I just would draw attention to, to note.
Can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Were you able to ascertain out of that 40,000 square foot and the Holiday Inn Express, how many rooms that would be?
72.
Thank you.
We were told 72. So, that's what I wrote down. The, an additional blow up of, of their own presentation about, we talked about financing for the project. So, partner equity outside of the city was $3,600,000. New market tax credits applied were totaled the value of 3.7 or $3,758,000. City TIF contribution was $2 million. A bank loan of 600, $6,800,000 was acquired. And so, the total project was just over $16 million.
And that TIF expenditure, did, what did that go towards? Was that the, because you can't use TIF dollars to pay for the library.
Right. So, TIF expenditures were directed, well, this went toward, this went toward the commercial part of the project and the overall development.
So, like the underground parking?
Yes. The, the lease payment, which is a component that would likely happen, and I'll get into the history of our project a little bit in, in the future. But, part of this whole process was an upfront cost on the part of the city as well as a lease, potential lease payment because the city would be occupying a private condo essentially in, in an existing private part, public-private partnership building. So, as a result of that, there would be a need for a lease payment. All the money associated with the lease payment was paid upfront also from the TIF and it funded the underground parking directly. So, that was the way to avoid any restrictions associated with using tax increment funding on a project that included the public space.
And we have no TIF financing for-
Yes. And that, yep, I've got that on the slide, too. So, correct. We have no, no TIF financing at this time available for the spot. As, and here, I've kind of covered the lease, lease agreement detail a little bit. City's lease payments would be 1.5 million over seven years. They rolled that into cost of the underground parking. The, regarding risk, concerns about risk and potential bankruptcy of anyone involved in the project, there, the risk issue and, well, McDonald and I brought this up and the library board is also well aware of it, that there, in order to qualify for the tax credits, there is no ability on the part of the developer or the city to require in any document associated with the project, any agreements, any, anything. Any, anything that mentions that after seven years, the building could go back to the city. And in Platteville, that's exactly what was happening. So, this building is finished, the hotel piece gets started at generating revenue, the, the library folks pull in or provide a lease payment, which they've done already upfront. And after seven years, the understanding and expectation is that, the library piece of this facility truly becomes a public structure.
Okay, but to clarify, you are saying the understanding is that at the end of seven years, it is gifted to the city. But, absolutely nowhere in writing or in any contract does it say that it will become the property of the city at the end of seven years?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. It's exactly, exactly the issue with, with the risk. And the city manager mentioned, you know, in her conversation was, well, you know, you have to evaluate comfort level. Platteville was, after working with the, this particular developer and their work on this block, was comfortable with that arrangement. Whether or not Whitewater would be comfortable with that arrangement is something that the library board needs to consider and the city council would need to consider. But, there is truly no way to, to clarify that in any legal language. The city manager of Platteville did explain to me that WEDA had stated that they would be restricting somehow payment or payout on tax credits if that was, if the developer went back on that whole idea. So, through, through WEDA, they were hoping to have the leverage needed to make sure that that happened, but they could not provide it in any documentation.
They would restrict future tax credits to that developer?
I did not ask a follow-up question, so I don't know the detail there, but the arrangement, we could follow up.
I can answer that question. The way it works for WEDA is it's a federal rule that they can't forgive. Basically, basically what they're doing is they're forgiving the loan on the, the public portions that they're going to gift back. After seven years, WEDA then forgives the entire loan. If the public structures are not gifted back to the city, WEDA does not forgive those loans. So, there's absolutely no reason why the developer wouldn't gift it back because he's going to lose money actually if those loans aren't forgiven.
Because they wouldn't be eligible for future tax credits?
Not only just future tax credits, but they're owning a building that they don't want to own because ultimately, they don't want to own a library. That's not what developers want to own. And the whole point of what WEDA was doing was trying to finance the library itself.
So, the building could never be released as anything else. It could potentially be rented for more money that could pay back the loan and continue to generate additional revenue in excess of the loan payment. Is that the case?
You could if you really wanted to, but the shape of a library isn't something that you're ever going to use as anything else. Library is a very special structure, requires a special building and processes in it that a normal building would not have.
Continue, yep, continuing on. Just the other, the other piece that is been, has been stated by, by some, though I have not personally reviewed close enough the numbers to confirm, is just that the development on this point, the advantage to the developer after seven years is they've generated revenues, they've paid down the debt for the cost of the project, and the advantage to the developer at that point is the bonus points through, via tax cut or savings as a result of gifting a portion of the facility back and being able to write off what remains of the cost for the structure. So, that I, in my mind is meaning that immediately they'd be able to just draw pure revenue from their hotel because the debt associated with the library piece of the project or the project as a whole has been written off. So, that's, that's all I have on that. I don't know if anybody had any other questions on that piece. I've got more information, so I'll keep going. Timelines, I just wanted to point this out. I know that the conversations that have been had with this potential developer in Whitewater, I should really start saying potential because we have never actually received a proposal, which is why I come back to the sneezing and the flu comment at the beginning. The city has never received a proposal, so we can't do a lot until we get an actual proposal to work with. However, thus far, the conversation that has, that has been had is by developer is, is that informally stated, he wants to have us break ground in August or by November. And the reality is that's, that would be hard to do and, and I would, I would have concern about being able to do that and properly vet a project with all the interested folks in the public. This is the timeline for Platteville. They said that they were all, that was the same proposal they had at the very beginning, but they worked with the developer and were able to extend timelines. So, November 2015 to January 2016 was supposed to be final approvals for all agreement, all documentation and demolition of existing structures. February 2016 through November 2016 was going to be building construction and December 2016 through February 2017 was construction of the clinic. So, we're looking at over, over a year by their timeline and right now, they are still several weeks away from completing the construction. So, it's been delayed.
Ask a quick question. When did the actual conversation start, though? Like approvals like were November, but when did they start talking to the developer? Like, how far was November from the start of the conversation? Because-
Right.
They're talking about like trying to finish this all within 2017 to us, but like how long is this timeline actually? Because this is considerably more than a year just from their potential approval timeline. So, I don't know how they're going to shrink it down to seven months with us.
Yep. The, the summer, fall of 2013, Mr. Hookstra of United Development Solutions expressed an interest in the project.
So, we're talking like the timeline for Platteville-
Yes.
We're pushing almost four years from the start of the conversation, but somehow in Whitewater, it's going to shrink down to a fifth of that time. in Whitewater, it's going to shrink down to a fifth of that time. Okay.
So, that's why I brought that up, to make sure that was clear. So, now going back, looking at, so this project versus us, right? When we look at where we are in Whitewater, I'm out of order with my, with my pieces of paper here, so bear with me. So, the, in Platteville versus Whitewater, so as I mentioned, we have no proposal. So, we have nothing truly to bring before the Library Board or to the City Council to evaluate. All the talk thus far has been anticipating what a proposal might look like and how would that fit with us. So, undoubtedly, if something were to come to fruition, it would be a public-private partnership. In Platteville, it was also a public-private partnership. Platteville had a downtown block that they recognized as being a block prime for redevelopment. And they had gone through the process of documenting that in a plan for redevelopment. That block, it's actually twice, downtown block and blighted block are really meant to be the same thing. It's also located in a downtown area. So, the similarity for us is that the, for what we have heard and what we anticipate would be in a proposal would be a piece of property that would include the corner of Main and Franklin Street, the Mercy Clinic space. That is, could still be considered in downtown, though it's outside of the triangle. The issue that we have, theirs was a blighted block, and as we've heard from Ms. Oberly this evening, we have a historic site. So, there's an issue. Perhaps red flag concern number one is we have a historic site, and at this time, it does not appear there's any way to move the building. So, if anything was to proceed there, there would have to be a resolution to this, to this issue.
Okay. Here's a question though. We are simultaneously saying that we are not talking about a specific property while talking about a specific property. So, are we talking about the Mercy Clinic or are we not?
I, if I haven't.
Because we have said both of those things, and I feel like to have a real, serious conversation about this, we need to say if we are only discussing the Mercy Clinic location or if we are having a discussion with a potential developer about the whole city. Because if we say aged clinic, historic building, that's one property. There is not more than one historic building containing a medical clinic in Whitewater. There just isn't.
No. If I haven't, if I haven't mentioned it already, we all, we all, I think everyone here knows that the Mercy Health Clinic building, which is the historic Green Chutters building, is one piece of the project. The developer I know is working on adjacent properties, but I don't know where they are because we don't really have documentation of that. And I don't know how appropriate it would be to talk about that piece in open session.
And just to clarify, also, I agree with Stephanie. I mean, the proposal that Mr. Hookstra brought forth did identify a particular site, which is the corner of Franklin and Main Street.
I just think to keep the narrative in the community consistent, we have to be honest about the conversation we're having, and that does include this specific property.
So, to clarify, that's correct. Thank you for bringing it up. We are, this is the site that we anticipate would be proposed by the developer. And when I think about where this would be located in general, so this slide doesn't really speak to anything but as it's anticipated to be proposed for this location, that we're, if we get anything in the mail, it's coming with this map in it, right? That has this spot. So, that's what this slide is about, is comparing those two. So, looking at their block versus what we would anticipate being the block where a proposed project would be coming from a developer. Theirs is in the tax increment district, and we're able to, they were able thus to apply funding for the project through the tax increment district. We do not have a tax increment district. Their library, I believe it's over 40 years old, but I couldn't remember and didn't confirm before our meeting tonight. So, their facility was aged, an aged structure. There are still, I think, our facility also, regardless of when it was built, has some issues that need to be addressed. But, our facility is, is younger than their facility, newer than their facility. Their facility is, includes a library on Main Street. It's my understanding that if a proposal were to come before the City Council that included the Mercy Health Clinic facility, that the library, while, while the entire project would be on Main Street, the library would not be on Main Street. And then, the last item I had here was just that they had a dilapidated clinic, we have an aged but historic building, and it's, I think that the idea that it would be anything dilapidated is still up for some discussion and debate. So, those are just some of the comparisons that I drew in looking at it. In many ways, the, I personally am, view favorably any opportunity for a public-private partnership, and if there's a need for a facility, we should move, we should look for opportunities that are win-win for everybody. This, their site is clearly something that was ready already, and our site, or the site we anticipate to be proposed by the developer, if we ever get a proposal, isn't. And this doesn't even bring to account or bring into any discussion the existing facility or existing site, because we already have a lot, a block we've tried to acquire by and by for redevelopment of a library facility.
Or the money.
Yep. So, I have, that's where I'm at with the Platteville visit. I have some other thoughts and what we would need to do before we could go forward with any project of any kind. Does anybody have any questions or interjections right now?
James?
Yeah, so unfortunately, some other meetings kept me out of the last couple council meetings, but I just really think this project has been pretty divisive for pretty much no, no reason not, not to say, I guess let me clarify. There's no proposal at the table.
No.
So, we're getting all up in arms about something that's not there. I mean, to be quite honest, I, I mean, in my personal opinion, I really appreciate the, you know, search for public-private partnerships, community development, all that sorts of things, and I really appreciate that and looking for proposals, but I, at this point, I am not really sure why we're wasting so much time and energy on something that we don't really know about yet. I also, personally at this point, I wouldn't even call it a green banana, this is like in the, in the, a seed, an idea. So, and also, if this was the case, if we took the same proposal that was at Platteville, put it right in Whitewater, I would not be comfortable with it. I think it's a huge liability to the taxpayers of the city, and I just, I'm not even sure that we, I mean, it might be a little bit controversial, but I don't, I am not sure that we need a new library.
And I would argue, I mean, I appreciate you going to Platteville on that, and we've had this conversation, and I know the Library Board has done some work, but to me, this is kind of cart before the horse. I mean, we've been asking for, where's the justification on the new library? And there's been some handouts on that, but there's not been a public education campaign because many of the people I talked to in the community are saying, we don't need a new library, it's only 25 years old. You know, it's not, and there are space limitations, but selling those, to me, one is, do we need a new library or an expanded library? If the answer is yes, why can't the current site work? And that has not been, there's been no education on that. You know, we bought up all those properties years ago. You know, and the number we hear, and I remember when I was on the Library Board, $10 million for a 10,000 square foot expansion, that's $1,000 a square foot. I was just looking at property, what it costs in New York, and it's 650 a square foot. So, I just have it hard, I have a hard time believing we've done our due diligence to get to this point. And we always want to keep options out there, but to me, I think we need to back this up a little bit and talk about, do we need a library? What's the Library Board's position? Because they have taken really no official vote on this or anything else recently, to my knowledge. So, we're, it's in our lap, but to me, it needs to be back in the Library Board's lap to show some leadership on this, to say, here's why we need a library, here's the options, whether it be this, the current site, some other site in the city, and then come back with a plan. I mean, we're getting people stirred up about this, and it's disjointed, and let alone the money and the financing of what would it cost to do it on this site or on the current site, and how does that fit in with our other CIP projects we just talked about? You know, if we spend $3 million on this, does that delay Clay Street? You know, what else, what else does that impact?
Correct.
There's so much to be done about this that it's, it's definitely not happening in August. You know, there's, you just can't jump in on something like this. And I really hope that the Library Board can take a little bit more proactive approach instead of us coming here and getting people all worked up, and people are confused and there's half pieces of truth here and there. To me, it's, do we need a new library, yes or no? If yes, what are the options, including the current site? And then we make a decision from there. But to me.
You know, I agree. I think these, this is kind of vague to me. I want hard numbers. I want to know, how many patrons do you have going in there? What is your library usage? What are your, what are your needs? Like I said, when I was a teacher, if I had to budget something, I had to make sure everything was accounted for before they would, would sign an invoice of any type. And I think, we're talking millions and millions of dollars, and I think really need to more, more input from the library, exactly what are your needs and specific needs, and then we could work from there and decide if we actually do need a huge doubled library or twice as much space. And I think I agree with Mr. Singer that there's a lot of room for improvements on site. As I understand, some of that land has already been purchased in anticipation of that expansion or possible expansion, and I think that's one of the first things we should investigate.
I guess, you know, I wouldn't offer that exact same criticism because a lot of those numbers have come to us. We get numbers from the Library Board. I mean, you're, this is your first meeting, so you haven't seen the numbers. We do have them. They do a tremendous job reporting that to us, and our Library Board is wonderful. But I think it's more than the Library Board deciding we need a new library, because in a completely non-offensive way, of course the Library Board wants a new library. It's full of people who love libraries, that's why you're on the Library Board. But I have yet to talk to anybody in the community who agrees that we need a new library.
I agree.
Of course, everybody on the Library Board wants a new library. They're on the Library Board because they love libraries, and that makes sense, and I love libraries too. But I don't necessarily think we need a 25,000 square foot library that costs millions and millions of dollars. I think there's a middle ground to be found here, and I think that's a conversation that hasn't been had, and I think that's the issue here. And I think, you know, frankly, for lack of a better word, there's been this strong desire of the Library Board, even as people have changed on the body to have a new library, and then all of a sudden, there was this person here offering a new library, and it seems amazing. It sounds like a free library when they first start talking about it, and frankly, it's not. No one's giving us a library. It costs a lot of money. And there's a huge conversation to be had, and frankly, I don't think it needs to be had with the Library Board. I think it needs to be had with the community. If we need bigger libraries.
That wasn't what I was saying, Stephanie. I'm saying the Library Board needs to be the, they're the advocacy group.
Yes, no, I completely agree.
And they would be the public educator, you know, they would drive that. I agree, but that was my point, not the line on the library, but.
No, I was more talking about the data. Like, we obviously have the data, we've obviously seen it. I just think there is an important conversation that needs to be had in the community, so when someone says to me, we don't need a new library, which is what every single person I've talked to has said, we can explain it to them. You know, because frankly, this is a bullet point list that frankly is not really inconsistent with current library patron demands, but what is that? That's, you know, what does that mean? It's fairly vague. Everybody I talked to says, well, we have a library, and frankly, maybe they could use the space they have better. And whether or not that's true, I don't know, but I feel like that's not our responsibility for the City Council to sit here for hours and hours and hours without a proposal in front of us, without a community that's actively engaged. Because the first thing they tell me when I say, well, we should talk about a million-dollar library, they say, well, fix our roads first. Because that's the issue.
Right. Mr. Allen?
We're getting way ahead of ourselves. Here we are falling into the trap of having the discussion of whether or not this is the right location for a library if we need one, but we're not there yet. We need to have the information first, we need to have a plan first, we need to hear from the Library Board, what their uses are, what their needs are, what the square footage is. Then we need to look at the current site, this site and other sites. There's just so much more we need to do before we have this conversation.
I'm just moving ahead with the slides that I'm hoping are illustrating that that's exactly the conclusion we were going to be going to. So, I don't need to say anymore unless. Unless, unless someone else would like. I do have information. Stacy was kind enough to provide me with some of the material that she had, had prepared in an effort to answer some of these questions, but we know that we're not going to get to a detailed, a detailed report tonight on, at any level. I also, I know that we've had, the Library Board has done a lot in terms of having architects and other groups come in and evaluate how can they more effectively utilize their existing space and where to go on the same site. They've come back, the estimates have been at the very far end of conservative in an effort to make sure that at the end of the day, the true cost was less, but I think that those numbers, the most recent being 10 million, is a very high amount and a prohibitive amount for any hope for, for a library development. I like to think we could go out and do it, but I, I work with other people fortunately that I work with in particular because they're more realistic on things like that, and then we talk about, talk it out and realize it's not going to work. And I think that there's, there's definitely some, some work to do in getting information about what is needed, details about this most recent estimate from an architect and what could we, what is it really? And then also, clarifying for this body why there are shortages. The bullet points in the slides are intentionally vague because we don't have time to talk about it. I'd be more than happy to come back with the library director and with the Library Board to show some of the reasons why there's concern.
And to my point, it wasn't that the Library Board hasn't done anything, it's that we're at this point talking about something that we don't have enough foundation to advocate for. I mean, I think they talked last night, and Stacy, if you could confirm that with a nod, that there is going to be a public education meeting or there was something scheduled for May, I believe?
May 22nd, 10:00 p.m. at the library.
So, starting that, that work, because we're getting feedback from our constituents saying, oh, hold up, you know, we need to have the ammunition and have this advocacy group that we have that's passionate about it in the Library Board driving the charge and helping us, because we can also have them at our meetings, but it would be helpful to have the Library Board who is very invested in, in making sure we have an adequate, modern library to lead that, and hopefully working with our public relations manager to come up with a campaign around what is the need, and then, you know, working with the rest of our city staff and potential developers on what are the options. And I would hope we would revet those proposals again because that number just seems inordinately high, given construction costs of most facilities, so.
Can we go, we're agenda for a presentation by Library Board representatives, are we going to have that?
That was the next little bit, and I was going to be the Library Board representative, given that.
Oh, you are? All right.
So, we, you know, if you want to have it, we can have it, but it sounds like May might be a better.
Okay.
But I'll look this direction for Library Board folks and see if I get any signals that should be, but I think we'll just come back after that.
I think that's probably.
Mr. Bennett?
Then I would say this, although I agree with comments that have been made with regard to the need for the Library Board to sell the case, on the other hand, I'd say, a number of years ago, I said to this body, I think we need to give the Library Board some direction about what we think is practical financially, and frankly, we have never taken any step towards doing that. We now have a finance committee or whatever it's called, and I would, and we have a finance director besides, imagine that. I would suggest that concurrent with this suggestion for an education campaign, it would be appropriate for us to refer to that finance committee to do some initial discussion about the whole financial implications of this initial proposal as well as other options so that we begin to get some kind of a handle on what we can tell the Library Board about what we think is even feasible to consider.
Thank you.
I've been kind of holding off making comments. One of the points of what Troy had brought to us was a project, not build us a new library. He is the first person in many years that's come into this city that said, I'd like to build and invest essentially $16 million into your community. The total construction is $9 million, and the city was going to put $3 million into that. The cheapest possible addition would be far more than $3 million onto the current site. The current site has problems with drainage and, and the actual land it's setting that is adjacent to it is not good for building. That is part of the reason why the expense is kind of ridiculous. is kind of ridiculous. What Troy was asking for when he came here last time is something from the city council basically saying, "Yes, we are interested in pursuing this." As soon as that happens, whether it be that location or another, and whatever possible caveats we want to put on that agreement, he's willing to go out there and invest 60, $70,000 in an architect to draw up a plan to show us what he's talking about. He's just asking for an agreement from us saying, "Yes, we're still interested." And it still comes back to the library, the, the new library, it would be far cheaper than anything we could possibly put into it. The hotel has been asked for by the university on a number of occasions, saying that they desperately need it and would be willing to come and tell us that also. Mercy has basically outgrown and the facility they're in today is outdated. They need to do something. There, everybody is trying to win. And at the same time, when he was here at the last presentation, he stated his goal was not to tear down the green shutters. It is movable. He has moved building, brick buildings that are far larger than that before, he said. So if we had to move it, we could move it. It could become part of the new library structure. You may only use part of the building, the facade or whatever, and then the back end of it wouldn't be the same original building because it may not be large enough to begin with. There are hundreds of possibilities, but until we say, "Yes, we're interested in even talking," he isn't going to invest money in it if he's not going to have any chance of a return. That's what he's asking for. At some point, we need to look at what the different steps are for, in order to be able to get an agreement, and what we, what caveats we'd want to put on that. One of the caveats is an agreement from the city that we do need a new library, an agreement with the Landmarks Commission that what, whatever would happen to that building would be approved by them. All these caveats can put in this initial letter of understanding for what it is. There's no reason why they can't be done.
Okay, but here's my question. At the beginning of what you just said, you said he would consider a different location. But the end of what you just said, you said that the Landmarks Commission could put caveats on what would happen to that building. So is he or is he not willing to consider not putting it in that spot? Because I recall him specifically saying it had to be there.
I did not say he would put it somewhere else. I said...
You said another location.
I said the building could move, is what I said.
Oh, so not the library?
The green shutters. Green shutters, building itself. It is, what, what he told us in closed session, which nobody else heard, was that it is actually cheaper to move that building than it is to tear it down.
So he will accept any caveat except it can go anywhere else in the city except that corner?
I didn't say he would accept any caveat. What I said is, "We can write up the rules for how this can go forward."
But I, I think he was clear in our discussion that that is his preferred site, and it may be his only site that he's willing to develop on.
But we can put that into any agreement we want to have with them as a letter of understanding, starting to move forward, put as many caveats as we want on it. That's all he's asking for, is somebody to say, "Yes, we're still interested in possibly doing this." When I look at a 7 million, $5 to $7 million minimum addition, and we're talking about 3 million, and it isn't 3 million because he's also willing to buy the current library and the material, the land around it, which would cover about half of that. And the remainder could very well come from tax payments that they'd be making over the seven years that we're making payments. All those things, the financials, all that can be worked out over the next nine months or however long it takes. We can define that. There's no reason why we can't define that and take the lead on that. But as long as we say, "Well, we're just going to sit around and wait until the, the city agrees to this, and then we'll sit around and wait for the finance committee to tell us how much we can spend." And then we'll, it's never going to happen. As a developer, he's not going to wait forever for us to be able to make up our mind. He's asking for us to give basic direction of, "Are you still interested?" And if so, tell me your caveats for getting a decision.
And I think we told him we were still interested in public last time.
Right, we told him, but he...
But how can we give him caveats if we don't know the financials, Chris?
That's my point. The, the financial is the caveat.
But that's why we need to have some review of that now that we have a finance director because there's other CIP matters that it might impact.
Right, there are.
The bigger issue that was brought up, I think, was the, the lease payment. Because that cannot be borrowed for, which would have to come out of our operating budget. And we don't have any capacity there. We'd have to probably go to a referendum to get that kind of...
And that's what I'm saying. You're going to have to, you, you can set up a letter of understanding that says, "By this date, if we haven't figured out how to make it financially work, we're done."
No, it is reckless...
By this date, if we can't get an agreement with the Landmarks Commission, we're done.
It is reckless and irresponsible to play with the city's finances like that. Absolutely reckless.
You aren't agreeing to anything. You're agreeing to think about it. Is all you're agreeing to.
We simultaneously are agreeing to think about it, but we can't sit around and think about it. I don't...
So, so what, so what does he need? Because I thought we made it clear, we were still interested in exploring an option with him and a public at our last meet, or our meeting where he attended, but that it wasn't going to happen on the timetable he had originally brought up, which was this condensed within this year for the tax, for the new market tax credit issuance this year. I think we made that clear, that it wasn't going to happen in that timeframe, but that we were open to looking at two-year, you know, in the future, that if he was willing to, we need more meat from him, too. And we just can't agree to something that...
And that's what I'm saying. He's asking for an agreement to say, "Yes, we're still interested." And he will go invest large amounts of money into giving us a real proposal, just like you're, everybody's asking for.
I thought that's what we said to him, though. We said we were interested, but we are not on your, we're not on the timeline you're proposing, but we would like to continue to at least get more information from you, explore this further.
That is unquestionably not what he walked out of here with.
But that, to me, that's his problem, not understanding what we said. And my frustration is this. We're expected to have like a 20-year CIP. We're expected to have 20-year financial forecasts, but it's okay to just say, "We'll figure out the finances later for a project that's going to cost multiple millions of dollars." I just don't see how that's anything but irresponsible.
That is not what I've said three times now.
You said, "We can figure it out later."
Hold on.
We are interested in talking to him and continuing through the process. If we cannot make the financials work, it ends. That is what I've said three or four times, and you keep telling me that it's irresponsible to go out and try to find the answers.
So what we need to talk about is next steps. We already have the library board having their meeting in late May to talk about the overall need and really work towards that. We've talked about the finance committee and the new finance director taking a look at our overall financial health and putting some scenarios in, whether it be the 3 million and, you know, some estimated lease payment and see how that fits in versus, you know, how that programs out with the rest of our borrowings and, and any negative impact and come back to council with that. And then I think we, as a council, had said to Troy last time that we were still interested in looking, but it wasn't going to happen this year. So maybe that needs to be conveyed to him again, that we are still interested as, you know, a fact finding and making, because we want to make sure we're, if this is a good deal, I think we can, you know, the public, you know, we would be able to educate and, and get buy-in on this. But we just don't have enough facts. We need him to put a little bit of skin into. So I thought the council was clear to him. If Cameron, you can communicate again, that, you know, the city is interested. It's just not two-year, or it's not within this year. It's, it's going to probably be at least two years to something. But I, I think that's where we need to go from here. We're not solving this tonight. It's just a matter of getting some of this out in the open, talking about it again, so people in the community also hear kind of where things are at. Unfortunately, it is sausage being made, which isn't always the prettiest, but, you know, we do need to keep everyone kind of educated and, and open.
So just to, just to clarify something on what I'm taking as direction, whether, whether anybody says, I guess, council member Benny has mentioned it a little bit. The very next step in any, in any projects is a financial analysis. I had a conversation with Karen Kurt, the city manager in Platteville, and when she had left, or they had a, they had a transition of city managers. And when they brought in the second city manager, that was the first thing that she did. And I've had, I mean, I remember conversations I've had Jeff Seer, conversations with Jeff Knight about it, and conversations with other managers about it, conversations with the city staff about it. We know that we need to have a financial analysis of where we, where we sit in general. So that will be coming. I will be working with the finance director to come back to what I guess now will be the finance committee, to vet some potential groups to work with and begin that process so that we, we're looking by the, by somewhere in early summer, we've got a financial analysis, and we've got an idea of where we are with what we can borrow and what we can't. And we've talked about this internally with staff on several occasions, but we've, we've not, as long as I've been here, truly gone and received a, a report like that and incorporated or involved those that are expert in that arena. And I would recommend that we do that. So I'll come back to the finance, finance committee once we determine when they're going to meet, because I don't remember. If that was determined already or not, I apologize. But we'll come back to that group and go from there with a, with a finance, with a plan for a financial analysis.
And, and once we have that, I think I said this last time, we haven't seen this at CDA level yet either, but it should be vetted there as well.
I agree.
But we're just too early right now, I think.
Yeah, I would say any real proposal's...
You can't vet it in the CDA until we have a proposal.
Well, we have some scenarios in terms of cost. That's what we would be talking about. Because the CDA may have vehicles that would allow us to...
May or not be help that the CDA can provide.
Yeah, they're definitely the more expert on these types of proposals, and I would certainly trust their judgment financially.
I would also like to just ask the library board, you know, as they're going through this, what about the private fundraising? Obviously, the last time, the library, when we did the Aquatic Center, private fundraising is a huge component of that, and we've not heard anything about what that projection could be, because that would help. You know, if we're talking about how much our investment is, you know, if we can also get a million out of the community, then that also helps factor into those decisions around what's financially viable for us to, yeah. And then the other thing is, and maybe Wally or Michelle, is there any covenants or anything on the current site in terms of the donations that were given for the current library in terms of its reuse or anything like that? I know sometimes we've had buildings that, you know, we get these weird deeds on and stuff like that.
I don't know either way. The library board just...
Hi.
Stacy may have some idea as to the documents. I don't have the legal documents.
But I just, as we're talking through that, so we know, could we sell off the property and, and use that as some of the proceeds?
You'd asked about private fundraising. We lasted a fundraising feasibility study in 2008, so that is out of date. As far as fundraising for the current building, it was a one and a half million on a $3 million project. The other one and a half million coming from the city. As far as any information that you, the council members would like to have, particularly the newer ones who have not had an opportunity to hear all this, I would be happy to meet with you at the library and go over all of the needs assessments we've had done and the strategic planning that we did in 2013 with the community focus group of about 45 people from the community, all of that information, the visioning process that we did with our architect, where they came up, the reason why the addition was, decided to be financially impractical. I'd be happy to go over all of that with you. So if we could coordinate times for a meeting, that would be great. Or I can present to the council as a whole, whichever you prefer.
But I think working also with, with Kristen also, because some of that feasibility stuff is yay thick and there's a lot, you know, and coming up with something that's consumable.
And certainly for the public, we would plan to do that. But I, I had gathered from some of the comments that the council would like a little bit more in-depth. And so...
But I think even some of those bullet points do help as well as people are talking to us, having that simplified content as well.
Yes, and I can give you both.
And I think it'd be nice to see a short video inside the library for community members. Like, I, I think it would be great if, you know, now that we have Kristen here who has the expertise to do something like that. You know, I think PowerPoints are kind of hard to digest, even in a meeting. But if you're outside of a meeting, if it's something that the community is, you know, if they can't make it to the meeting, something that's, you know, three to four minutes, it's not, you know, 15 minutes long, they're not going to sit that long. But, you know, the bullet points come up on the screen, and you can physically see, you know, if it's something like, because we've talked about like lack of outlets, okay? Like, why is that a problem? Here's an image of this person can't plug in what they need to plug, you know, that sort of thing. You know, I think something that's more digestible when you're having those sort of communications is helpful because frankly, PowerPoints are not the easiest thing in the world, even in a meeting, but outside of a meeting especially.
One of the things that Troy has brought up to me is, as soon as he is comfortable that we are truly interested in, in moving forward, he is willing to take the PR firm that he has that helped Platteville do this exact same thing and work with us for free. We're, we basically aren't public relations people. We have one person in the city staff. She isn't going to have time to do what, to, to do what really needs to be done. Once again, I mean, we're, the developer's willing to help us do all of these things to make sure that everybody is happy with what ultimately gets proposed.
Do you know how much Platteville's raised?
How much what?
How much money Platteville's raised with that firm?
Raised by the taxpayers?
No, I mean, like, the PR firm is going to help with fundraising. Do you know how much money they've raised?
It wasn't a matter of helping with fundraising. It was a matter of helping why we need a library, why this location, why, 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 why. All the things that everybody here has been saying out to the public needs to get, just through the point you made, the bullet points, the, how do you properly tell people, "This is why we need a library."
Okay, my question remains, do you know?
Yes, I, I don't know the exact number. I'll have to look through the papers again. All I can tell you right now is that they met their goal. Is it more than what?
A million dollars?
Question. I think so.
Actually, I think a million dollars was their goal.
A million dollars was their goal.
I believe that was correct.
They did not meet that, but they met what they needed ultimately.
Yes, but I don't know what that number was.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
485,000.
Chris, if I could, you said in your discussions with Hookstra, are you negotiating with him?
No, I just...
Have you contacted...
After, after he, no, after he came in here, he sent us all an email back and made some comments and asked some questions, and I answered his questions. And he's asked a couple other questions since then as to what is going on in Whitewater. And those are what I've been answering. I've not negotiated with anything.
You're not representing the library?
I'm not representing anybody. I'm trying to act as if, yes, we're still interested. If I had not contacted him, he would probably have dropped it by now because it's been weeks and he's gotten very little contact from anybody in the city.
Well, then is he that interested?
But the words that Patrick said tonight were the same words he said to him two weeks ago. So that would be, I mean, honestly, if he can't understand those words, that's his issue.
He doesn't seem, and if he's not so interested in doing the project, if the community's not so interested in the project, I don't know why we're talking, we could talk about this until literally the cow comes, cows come home. I think they're probably already home. Let's just move on.
I think we do have a path forward in terms of looking at the financials. The library board's doing their work. Troy has been given some feedback from us in terms of where we are at. If that is not enough for him, he needs to tell us what else he needs, something written in blood. I don't, I mean, I don't know what, what we're going to be able to give him at this point with as much information as we have. If we can just keep moving on the way we talked about and, you know, follow up with the library after their May 22nd meeting, and just communicate with Troy that we're still interested. We still are, you know, exploring our options. We're doing our due diligence on some of our financial concerns around architecture.
And he's not, he's not going to go away.
And I'm of the mindset that if that is not a big enough commitment, then he is not a developer that he should be working with. Because that is all that a responsible elected official would be able to commit to right now. There is no finances in front of us. We have no idea what would happen to this historic site. It would be reckless to make any bigger statement than that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that he took home the message last time, that we're not ready to move on this, but he'll be back for the next two years.
You know, for a lobby, he's a developer.
He'll be looking for tax credits again next year and the year after that.
But I think we don't want to ignore him, and we don't want him to ignore us, because I think that was a concern as well, is there was this gap in communication as well from his side. So I think we just want to make sure, you know, Stacy, Cameron, you can follow up as speaking for the city about where we're at. And just tell him this discussion tonight, and then he can, he can make his decision as what he wants to do. I mean, overall, we need the finance committee to look at our financial health anyway, regardless of this proposal or something else. So, I mean, to me, some of the work we're going to be doing benefits us long-term even without...
It's a, it's a long time off before we get into this debate about which site and the needs, so.
So my only question for clarification is, based on the things that I offered, what would you like from me as a council? What would be most helpful to you?
What would be most helpful to you?
I think coming back after May 22 meeting to kind of hear how that went is important. Like, I don't know that all of us, I mean, that's moving, so I know that I'm not going to be able to be there, I'll barely be able to move. But I think that would be really important. I think bringing forward what you presented there, maybe in a slightly more condensed format, would be important, too, because I think that's a conversation that needs to be had here, and hearing any feedback that you get.
Okay.
What I would add and propose, and we can talk later, Stacy, is just having, at some point in the next couple months, maybe look at having a meeting there, or having a, whether it be a special meeting or a regular meeting, we can coordinate anything that needed to be done so that it can be televised, that everyone knows the location, and just have it there so that people can actually see what Stacy's talking about.
I think that would be great, too. Thank you.
Yeah.
Is anybody in the public?
I just want to follow up from the CDA perspective. I think it's important for everybody to know that when WEADA started calling for meetings, they started calling Pat Cannon and I. And it's pretty typical that WEADA's, with all the projects they've done like this, the CDA has been involved because of the bonding, and initially, they weren't talking just about a library, they were also talking about another business in our industrial park, and they were coupling the two together. In all fairness, the CDA didn't have a clue, so let's go back to the conversation we had the last meeting, that the transparency needs to really--
Develop.
--get out there. And you need to reach out, the library needs to reach out to more than just city council, but also the CDA, because the bonding and the work that typically is done with WEADA will be happening with the CDA and your financial advisors. So I think there's a lot of issues. We couldn't answer those issues, I think, and so that's why they wanted to meet with Cameron and Patrick rather than the CDA eventually, and I think that, I think, for you guys, it's important that when WEADA started calling, Troy wasn't calling us, WEADA was calling us, and all fairness, when we talked to folks, they were shocked, they didn't understand why the CDA wasn't involved. So I think it's important, as you plan your process, that you know that.
Are we to the point, then, where there is so much information out there today saying this is what is being proposed? Should Troy be coming back and doing a presentation to the public like he did to us to explain what it is we're talking about? Because this isn't, it comes back to, again, my point, this isn't just a library. The library is one-third of the project.
I think Cameron--
We desperately need a hotel, and we desperately need an upgrade to Mercy. They aren't going to stay there forever in their current building that is not working for them. They're very much looking forward to an upgraded facility.
I think we need to focus on what we've discussed with the library board right now, and when that's done, we can have that conversation.
Yeah, let's take care of that piece first.
I'm just saying--
But potentially, having him come back may be an option, depending on after we look at more of the financials and that. I know he volunteered that, and I think we would want that, I just don't think--
I'm just saying that right now, there's so many people out there saying that, no, we can't do it because the green shutters are going to be tore down, and no, we can't do it because it's $3 million and we can't, we don't have any financials figured out yet, no, we can't do it because, 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 because. And nobody, there isn't good information in public.
No, we can't do it--
The public needs at least as good information as what we got.
I don't think we're saying, no, we can't do it, we're saying we don't have enough information to make a decision yet on.
Right. But if we're talking about a proposal, the public deserves to know what that proposal was.
But we have told them that.
I would rather wait, and let's, anybody else in the -- I'd rather wait to bring Troy back until after the library board has had their May 22 meeting--
I think that's the last.
--and then make a decision after that, because we could still bring him, you know, the summered months are probably not the greatest, but sometime in September or October, if we were to that point and really wanted. I think enough of the information about what he's proposing has been disseminated out. If we need to do a little bit more, we could have the city staff put something together about, here's what has been theoretically proposed by Troy, even though we don't have an official proposal.
I don't even want to waste the city staff's time. If he wants a proposal, bring a proposal.
I think Cameron has presented this in an adequate fashion in terms of the information we have right now. He has presented nothing more than what Cameron has given us tonight. I think it is up to the, you know, the library board at this point to disseminate any further information that they have and work on this issue of communicating, moving forward regarding the need for a library, which we've already discussed.
But I think if Troy's a developer, we've done developments before, Chris, where the developer has decided to do a, you know, there's been some large student developments on Prince Street, where the developer wasn't, you know, did their own meeting, they came down, they invited people.
Right.
Troy has that ability to do it. Nobody up here is going to say, no, no, don't come. You know, if he wants to come down and wants to continue to sell our community on this, that's his prerogative. None of us are going to say no, but in terms of having it be a public meeting and that, I think we want to get more information from the library board and their meeting--
The other thing that I think needs to be sold just as heavily as the library, is I've heard from people saying, why do we need another hotel?
But to me, him as a developer, that's his job to sell that, then.
Yeah, it's not our job to do that.
But the person who's asking for the hotel is the university. There's no reason why the university can't have a little stake in this and come to the council and explain to public why they believe they need a hotel.
But it is not our job as a public government to sell a private business. If he wants to sell his business, he is more than capable of coming here and doing that. He has email, he can ask us to come here, he can do that, I don't have an issue with that. I think it's a wonderful idea if he wants to pitch it to the public, but it's not our job to tell him that's a good idea or offer to do it for him. And if the university thinks it's a wonderful idea, they're also very smart, intelligent people who are more than capable of proposing that idea. It's not like they don't know how to get a hold of us. We are not going to do his legwork for him. We have enough responsibility to the citizens of this community to deal with.
So he's always invited, Chris, but I think in terms of a formal meeting when we're talking about it, to me, that we've got to wait probably till the latter part of this year at the earliest. Plus, we're getting into the summer months anyway with people on vacation. This isn't happening this year. We have a little bit of time to do a little bit more due diligence and then make a decision whether we have him come in and waste his time, if for some reason we say financially this isn't going to work.
I don't mind--
We have a member of the public who's been waiting for some--
I was just going to say, I don't mind communicating, having a candid conversation with Mr. Hoekstra. It won't be until Thursday, I'm away tomorrow at a training meeting.
Okay.
But I don't have a problem having that conversation and helping to reaffirm what's been discussed. I also, my concern with having him come before we have the library meeting is, I don't want to convey anymore the idea that we're wed to any one developer, any idea. So, that would be my reason for recommending after that date. However, I'll make it clear to him that if he wishes to come and provide us with additional information, that we'd be happy to have that.
Karen, you want to come up, then?
Well, I'm leaning more to what Cameron just said personally, and Karen Coburn, one Coburn Lane in the city. I guess my consideration is kind of like the elephant in the room, which is, in my estimation, is a historic building that might be torn down. Now, I know there was some talk about lifting it up and moving it elsewhere, but it isn't just that. And if you'll bear with me for two minutes, I did write something that was meaningful to me, and whether or not, it's a little super, but I've got to read it anyway. As a child, I would leave the movie house, I grew up here, around nine o'clock at night, and walk slowly up the main street, past the Masonic Temple, the Lutheran Church, Carnegie Library, the beautiful flowing fountain and park, and then be greeted almost immediately on the left by the stately green shutters. As I moved up the elm-draped street, sad, I enjoyed the beautiful homes also fashioned with the cream bricks Whitewater was known for, until I reached home, which was located across from Old Main at the university. This may sound overly reminiscent from an 80-year-old woman, but I assure you that I have traveled and lived in many cities along the way. To me, what makes a city whole and sustaining is not only its quest for the future, sometimes ruled by profit, but also its past. Those that created our landmarks left behind an energy of caring and vision that grounds us, who live in the present and consider the future. It is important that we value the beauty that was created as well. Many quality buildings have been torn down to make way for what we term progress. The removal of our city hall illustrates this lack of vision. Often, it is profit-driven without regard for things that created our city's soul. The destruction of a landmark such as the green shutters may leave such a wound, and lack of grounding in our community psyche. I would like to add my voice to many here in Whitewater who would grieve the loss of one of our revered landmarks and hope that our city will consider the consequences of no longer having this anchoring historic building with us. Those are my feelings.
All right. Is there anybody else in the public wishing to speak?
Corey Oberle again, and briefly, I'll underscore what Karen Coburn stated. She described very eloquently the neighborhood district that's preserved there. This is larger than tearing down the green shutters or moving it. It's altering a historic district that can never be put back together. Imagine a four-story structure, however it's used, close to the sidewalk, close to the corner, in the middle of the historic district. It will change Whitewater's feeling forever.
All right, is there any further discussion at this point? Otherwise, we plan on having this, so late May is the meeting, so our first meeting in June, we could have an update on this. The finance committee will get on that, you know, with Mr. Hatton starting, and, you know, we'll keep things moving. It's just potentially not at the pace originally discussed. All right. All right, next up, we have discussion possible direction to hold a joint council, CDA, and plan commission meeting to allow for input from local businesses. So I put this on, but there's been other council members that have brought this up, and there was CDA members and that. There's been a couple of businesses in the community that have concerns about, concerns, and want an avenue to be able to express that to the city. It was discussed that potentially it would be better just to bring all those three bodies together, including our new finance director, our new CDA director, hopefully, and just have it up, kind of an open forum for those concerns to be brought up.
Yeah, basically about business attraction and retention.
Yeah. And any other issue, you know, just having a forum so that, you know, we can have a list of that there. I think the grocery store was, somebody brought that up as well, as an issue as well. But this would be just an open forum, not necessarily focused on any one particular item, but basically a public hearing where those concerns could be brought forth, and then we could always parcel out those, you know, follow-up or future meetings if we need to address them.
It would be nice to know what the CDA is actually working on. I mean, at this point, I have no idea. We need a grocery store, we need single-family housing, and they're trying to develop, I'm guessing, out near the bypass, other commercial properties out there. But what is actually, what are we trying to do? What direction are we giving them? Have we given them any direction whatsoever?
Well, it sounds like a good time for a joint meeting, though.
Yep. And I think, you know, with our new potential staff person coming on board, you know, there's going to be some kind of strategic planning with the CDA to make sure that person's goals. But it's business retention and grocery, I mean, there's a host of things, but I think we'll be able to communicate that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That isn't out in public. Everybody talks about the CDA, but nobody probably has any clue what they're really doing.
Well, I mean, they have public meetings, so I don't know that it's not out in public, but--
But I think with the staffing, that will help, kind of that, and we can do an update, especially when that person is here. All right, next up, we have council member, so is everybody good with that joint meeting? We can probably schedule that in May sometime, if that works.
Sure.
All right, next up, we have council request for future agenda items. Ms. Gadel.
I don't have anything, Mr. Benny.
No.
Mr. Allen, Mr. Grady.
Would we be interested in having WEADA come in and explain how the grant process works, so that that is clear to everybody on council and public? Whether we go with this proposal or some other proposal, no matter what we're doing with any public-private partnership, it's going to be going through WEADA.
So you basically want a presentation on new market tax credits?
Yeah.
From Farshad?
WEADA is willing to come.
We've had them before in the past, the CDA, sorry, I'm interrupting. I think, I would just say, I would request that that also be after May.
That's fine.
Yep, I think that that's a great idea, because the CDA benefited greatly from a discussion that was had, and it was open for everyone. It's been several months, I don't remember when it was.
It wasn't that long ago, but--
But having something like that again and having it here would probably be beneficial.
Yeah, because the council is the one who needs to know that now, not just the CDA, as to how that works.
I sort of resent that we don't understand something.
Questions as to how the whole thing works.
I think there are council members at the meeting, Cameron, that was--
Yeah, there were.
I think that actually Farshad was the one that originally brought to that meeting the concept of a library, public-private partnership seemed to be the sizzle that was going on nationwide.
And I would like to clarify that it's not as though none of us understand this, and that's why we disagree.
And I think that's where I called up first, talking to Farshad.
Jeff. And then, anything else?
Nope.
All right, Mr. Langness?
Nope.
All right, Nick?
I was going to say, the next item is remaining on here because we soon will have an agreement to discuss regarding WPPA and the K-9 officer, but I have not had a chance to review. I don't think we've received an updated draft. We have received it, but I have not had a chance to review it. So, it's not anticipated for--
I saw one that I made comments on, but that was a couple weeks ago. I haven't seen a new one, I don't think.
Neither, either?
Since removing it, yeah, that's my point, is I don't have an agreement to bring you tonight.
Okay.
But it will remain on the agenda.
You don't have it either?
I know, I have it. I put it up in the city council packet.
I don't--
So, you're saying we do not have the closed session?
I'm bringing it up, but we don't. This will remain on the agenda until we've had an opportunity to review the agreement. Nobody has had a chance to review, I have not had a chance to review the agreement.
I wanted to mention that tonight, I believe, is the last occasion that our assistant city manager, Chris McDonald, will be with us, and unfortunately, he's not with us at this point. He has, what, another week or so?
He is done on Friday. So, and something I wanted to point out earlier, and even though he's not here, I would just point out that in the last 18 months, he has acquired for the city's benefit over 1.5, I think actually 1.8, total, 1.8 million dollars in grant funds for projects that he prepared and discussed tonight. So, just so that you're aware of that. I think it's been a huge benefit, his work, especially on these projects, and will be sad to see him go, but he's going to better things for his future career.
Maybe we should mention where he's going.
He is going to be the HR coordinator and assistant county administrator for Ozaki County, so.
I'd like to express appreciation for his work with us and wish him well in his future endeavors.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.